With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have fifteen minutes before we take up any formalized timed actions, so we as the board have some administrative matters that we'll continue to work on in that fifteen minutes if it's okay with everyone, so if you call a meeting order.
Move for the agenda.
Second.
Any changes or corrections that you're aware of, Shelley? Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Minutes were sent out ahead of time, and we just notified there was a couple little tweaks that seem to look okay to me. Anybody have a motion?
Make a motion to approve. I just asked Shelley about the Community Action Board meeting was actually just a personnel committee meeting, the big board meeting was last night, so last week was a personnel meeting.
Okay.
With that change.
Move approval as amended. Are you second in that then, Corey?
Yes.
Okay. Moved by Bob, second by Corey to approve minutes as amended. Call in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Claims were sent out in advance, and we have any questions regarding claims?
Move approval and authorize auditor to issue checks.
Second.
Thank you, Corey. Moved by Corey, second by Bob to approve claims and authorize auditor. Any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. We have one employee change, Katie Catherine Swider. We call her Katie, right?
Yep.
Okay, Katie Swider. Anybody have any questions?
I'd move to approve step raises.
Second.
Moved by Corey, second by Bob to approve step raises as presented by the auditor. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries unanimously. Budget schedule, we got the copious amount of work from workforce development. I thought we would probably put it on for next week's agenda item, as an agenda item, and then people can come, if that will give us an opportunity for a weekly review on our own before we...
I thought they did a pretty good job.
Yeah, there's certainly a lot of detailed information. Anything else that needs to be said initially regarding that?
No. So you're gonna invite in department heads, or just HR?
I think what we'll do is we'll just put it on as an item, and I'm not gonna specifically invite. If they wish to come, they can come, but we'll have Cassandra listed as like a, I don't know for our schedule for next week, if it's 9:30, we'll just put a 9:30 time slot for a fifteen minute conversation about it, perhaps.
Are we looking to do an action item at that point? You're probably not.
I don't believe we'll have any action.
From like a setting of wage or...
You know, we have, I think we've all discussed that we have pretty much the entire month of December to have these early conversations, so we'll just take advantage of that, and not try to make any decisions regarding it, but gather information, so. Everyone okay with that then?
Yep.
Any other conversations regarding budget today? Board committee updates, Bob?
I did go to the safety meeting at Highway Department, and some good discussion out there. I think as a whole, we're doing very well. For safety, we just, we put things in three buckets, basically things that departments can handle on their own, like cleanup, et cetera, then create a peg list for Scott to go around and do some work, and then the last one would be a budget recommendations for improvement, so that was, that was good. Went to the vets meeting, you know, they had their personnel evaluation, so they went through that, they did a very thorough job, and you know, things seem to be moving in the right direction. They understand that, you know, they gotta get claims done a little bit faster, and then give us a little bit of a meeting and some of their numbers, so. And they talked about, you know, making sure phone calls are replied to.
Excellent. Meeting some of the numbers, like the benefits, or...
Yeah, what I didn't like about their she is, you know, they got this rolling average. We need to know what the net difference is, and so they're gonna add another column on, you know, what new claims have been submitted. It may not be approved yet, and we're getting the money, but we'll at least see a change.
Okay, understood. Anything else, Bob? Corey?
Last Thursday, I wasn't able to attend the building remodel, the teams meeting weekly with Scott and the architects. I was...
And Doris?
The EMA meeting, EMA meeting on Thursday afternoon, finally. That was a pretty lengthy one. We discussed budget for next year. Aaron is, would like to consider replacing the truck with a Tahoe or a Suburban, having issues keeping stuff clean in the back of the truck, dust, road dust and whatnot, for some of the, like sealed cases, things like that are still getting dust in them, so he's put some numbers together on that. There would be kind of a step in budget request for that, like they can't, don't feel they can handle it all within their budget, so that'll be talked about at budget time. Department, give a department update. The CERT class is already full for next spring at Wortburg, twenty-six more Wortburg students for that CERT class, just like they had this last year, twenty-six. Aaron is now certified for the, to program our Essex radios, our new Essex radios that we have. He's went through the training on that, so he can do the programming, we don't have to bring an outside entity in. Has, still working on drone certification. That was something we had asked back, start with, to try to get done last year, and is still working through that, so that's not done. Then we moved on, there was a, the board approved, or the commission approved, a statement of educational qualifications for Aaron. That was some stuff stemming out of that civil rights complaint, we discussed that. And then Dustin Newhoff from Waverly Fire Department presented on a crisis canine proposal. There's an entity that trains these canines, and they, they can recognize stress in an individual, whether it's a first responder, or a fire department member, or like a family member going through a crisis, and so like the dog is there for comfort, basically, like it's, through its training recognizes that there's, you know, that somebody is obviously under stress, under stress, and will come and just, you know, be there to comfort beside, and it's a pretty neat, several agencies across the state have them in place. Aaron kept a witness at Estreville this year at the training, was, was a very well thought out venture that this, this entity is doing, and so Dustin has volunteered, if, if there's support for this, Dustin volunteered to actually buy the, the dog himself, if there's support for the training, and he would be the handler for it. So it's about a $10,000 investment on the front end, and then obviously less in the out years. It's about a year and a half start to finish for the training, but the commission was, was interested in, and so they're gonna look further into it. We approved the valuation process for the employee handbook, that what we had sent over as a board, so next meeting, they're going to figure out the process that the commission will handle internally. And then Mary Anderson handed out a letter to legislators, this goes back to the...
Do we have the folks back here, please not have a conversation at this time?
The, the statement of qualifications letter, Mary Anderson sent a letter to the legislative, our local legislators, asking that they consider changing the administrative code to remove the four-year educational qualification, the degree qualifications from the code, because that was the stem of the, the code requirement, the educational qualification statement that we had approved earlier. And then we discussed the civil rights complaint that was settled in July. And then lastly, this will be coming to us in January, the EMA chair presented a recommendation letter, they would like a different representative from the board supervisors, they're not happy with the oversight that I've placed on their board, so that's something in January, we discuss boards and commissions. They, they don't want me on that board anymore, and I'm fine with that, with some of the defamation that's occurred in my case, I, I'm at that point of considering legal action, so I think when we get to January, if we wanna switch up commission commitments, I'm fine with that. Meeting ended with public comment from Matt Schneider. His comments were response times due to the Waverly three lane, three lane has had a negative impact on both actual crashes and response time from data he's pulled together. He's engaged with federal regulators who are now embracing that the road diet was a mistake in many locations across the country, and state, state level regulators are starting to acknowledge that as well. So that was the end of the EMA meeting, and then last night, we had an in-person meeting for Community Action, it was a really good meeting. We had operations as a whole are getting back to normal after the federal shutdown, we're starting to see the assistance monies flowing again, LiHeat for energy and heat assistance is moving again, some of the first payments are going out for that. They are in a position, I know you guys have probably heard through some of our ISAC stuff, the Thrive Iowa program that's up. Nicole is applying on behalf of Community Action for the, the regions, follow the behavioral health regions, for that, it's gonna be sixteen counties where we only serve seven in Community Action, but after a lot of talk with the other regions and, and agencies, Northeast Iowa will be applying for, to be one of the Thrive coordinators, and so it would be, if, if approved, it would be two, what they call navigators, which are essentially caseworkers, and one supervisor for the area. It would be doing the seven counties we currently serve to start with, with the ability to expand all sixteen. It's a two and a half year grant from the state of Iowa, it starts in January. The, coming up to speed is very fast, because notice isn't gonna be given until December sixteenth, who the awards are, or who is awarded the contracts, and they're expecting the process to start January first, so very quick timeline.
What happens in two and a half years, then becomes an unfunded mandate for the counties?
Well, and it's, I think they're giving themselves time, so what I didn't know about this, I hadn't heard this until last night, but I've read quite a bit about Thrive Iowa, but they're only rolling it out in three regions. They're not doing every region at once, and so I think it's almost like a trial, like to see what they can learn from it. And the program is, is modeled after a program that's functioning in Arkansas, so they do have at least a working, in, in existence model to kind of, to build off of, so it's not all completely new, like, I mean, they've, they've seen other agencies work through this in another state. But that's, that's the direction they're going, so like I said, well, no more in January, if, or late December, if, if they're awarded it, but it's a neat opportunity, it's, it's a more direct funding model to people that need assistance, versus like our FADS, like our Family and Development Sustainability Program is a little more lengthy and involved, where this is more like taking care of crisis type situations, and getting people back on their feet, a little more directed, so. There's a niche there where I see need for it, and it aligns with a lot of programs already there that are served by Community Action, so I, I think it's a good fit. My concerns are, it's just going through the behavioral health transition that we've gone through, and all the, the roadblocks and hiccups we've had with that, it concerns me that we maybe haven't learned all our lessons yet to, to be taken on another project like this. That was all for Community Action, it was a good meeting, about, about an hour long meeting. Next Wednesday Rotary, Waverly Rotary has asked me to present on the County Comprehensive Land Use Update Project at the Lunch and Learn at Wortburg, so I'll be putting a presentation together for that, about a twenty minute presentation, so I'll probably see you there.
Be careful on that presentation, I've just reminded you that nothing's been approved, it's just not even in the form of a recommendation yet, so. I had a couple of meetings, but I'm, because of time, I'm not gonna start, and I'd be interrupt myself, so I'll wait for that. I did receive a letter from the chair of the EMA Commission, and I will put that on next week's agenda as a formal acceptance of that, and we can begin that conversation probably at that time, so. Would you pass those over to Shelley? Okay, we're very close, so. Mark, typically, we have the applicant join Lindsay, so if you wanna just...
We're gonna do that CBBT first.
Do see, get Brad knocked out of the way.
Let's, let's, let's go ahead and do that, and we have a resolution in front of us for CBBT, a final plat for really dark. Lindsay?
This is for Outlet Two on Channel Drive there, just east of 218 in Janesville, for lot six, seven, and eight. Anything else to add? Zone commercial, Advanced Underground has a shop going up with offices and shop storage for their business.
There's no issues from the zoning board?
Nope.
Everything looks good here?
Nope, correct.
Move to adopt resolution for final plat subdivision for CBBT properties.
Second.
Moved by Corey, second by Bob to approve as requested, any further discussion? All in favor?
Go ahead. Ninety-nine in Shelley, or ninety-eight?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries unanimously.
You're good.
Just one person leaving?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Mark?
Yeah?
Could you pull up next to Shelley there, so he'll be addressing us? Welcome, everyone. This will become a public hearing, just a second. When we get into that public hearing, as always, we appreciate total respect for each other, and I anticipate that that will happen. Bremer County citizens are quite well at doing that, and that is greatly appreciated, and please address us, not each other, because the issue is between Holbach and us, not Holbach and you guys at this point, so go ahead and take over, Lindsay. Oh, clipboard, if you have not signed in, we need you to do so, so is there anyone here that is not signed in on the clipboard? Thank you.
And you may wanna just say that we're also recording this, so just...
I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'd move to open the public hearing, first reading ordinance 2507.
Second.
Moved by Corey, second by Bob to open the public hearing for ordinance 2507 regarding a potential rezone for Marky and Wendy Holbach. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Typically, we ask you if you've heard anything from the public, and it's clear that you have, and we have, so we'll start by you. Do you have anything to say as an opening statement? One final thing, please remember that there are a lot of people in the room, and we only have a half hour, so keep your comments, including you, Mark.
Yep.
Keep your comments to essential items, and not get off track, so go ahead.
Mark, Wendy, and Nick Holbach are here to request a rezone from A1 to A2 for residential development. This was brought to the board a few years back, prior to my time, so I'm not familiar with the history of the previous requests, but we are here again to take another look at it.
Just to be clear, the previous request was by a different property owner?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
That was twice.
Pardon me?
That came twice, by the way.
Yeah, I think it's come several times over the years.
Yeah.
Mark?
Yep, thank you. I will be brief, less than four minutes. I wanted to just write this down, so I don't forget anything, or say something out of turn. So good morning to the board. My name is Mark Holback, we are looking to rezone our thirty acre parcel on 1335 190th Street from A1 to A2. I will start and end my conversation with freedom of property ownership. The P&amp;Z decision last week to deny approval again showed their inconsistencies. I did email a map to you yesterday, the three board members, to show adjacent properties to our parcel where the CSR was higher than our sixty-five, and rezone has been approved in the past. There are examples all over the county where at the time the P&amp;Z has approved rezones on much higher than sixty-five CSR like our parcel. Also, when it comes to farm ground, I have a letter of approval from the farmer who has farmed that ground for the last fifteen years. You have that letter, he supports houses on that parcel. The next key point is very important, I would like everybody to hear this. That parcel was once part of the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan to be designated for houses. The research has already been done. Eighteen months of work at taxpayer expense was completed to show and prove that parcel is viable for houses. Then strangely, it was removed from the comp plan. You three supervisors have a deposition in your possession on how it was removed from the comp plan. I won't get into that right now. This isn't always has been a case of NIMBY or not in my backyard. I understand this, and the neighbors all have their right to voice their opinion. But at the end of the day, this comes back to freedom of property ownership and the exercise of our free will, and our freedoms as described by James Madison and the founding fathers in the Constitution. In the end, we should be able to choose what we wanna do with our own property. As long as we are not breaking any rules, regulations, or guidelines, we should be able to exercise free will. One quick example, I'll be brief, the pipeline. Nobody, including myself, wants a pipeline on their property, but I find the irony and the hypocrisy unparalleled in this case. The same people that don't want to be told what to do with their own property and a pipeline, and I include P&amp;Z in this, are here trying to tell me what to do with my property. They are trying to control other property, other people's property rights. As I sum up, I've been trying to get on P&amp;Z for years, and I'm happy to say that I'm finally a new member. I've been trying to educate and teach the other members about property rights in my short tenure. As you can see, I still have work to do. As I sum up, I will take it back to freedom. Again, I totally understand the neighbors and their NIMBY, not in my backyard, they are also exercising their free will to speak out and oppose. But the question I ask is, why is it okay for them to live out on 190th Street and nobody else? But it, again, in the end, we own the property, they do not. So this last couple sentences, Bob, this is kinda more tailored towards you, if you'll humor me, just because you're a newer supervisor in District One, covering kind of more of the, of the Waverly area with a financial side of it. Beyond freedom of property rights, I also believe the county is at an inflection point. The county is in desperate need of building parcels outside the city limits. 190th or C-33 is a corridor of development. This is especially true with the two schools going in north of Waverly out by this parcel. It's time to move forward for the betterment of the county, and its citizens, and the population. It is not, this should not be driven by a handful of opposition any longer. So with this all said, we kindly ask the supervisors to please consider our application for rezone. This is to improve the county, increase the tax base, and simply move the county forward. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mark. I have one question.
Yep.
Clarification or, for you two watching.
Yes.
How many lots are we talking?
So we have done a concept of eight lots at this point in time, and with variability based on bulk size, as Lindsay knows, up to possibly eleven at the most, probably eleven to twelve if we could fit them in there for tax base, depending on the economics at the time, we do a preliminary plat, but we have that flexibility. We're looking at very high-end homes here, kind of a Shelby Ridge Two, if you will, if not higher end, so the tax base revenue is substantial.
Eight to eleven?
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Does your wife have anything? Lindsay, do you have anything? Okay, then I guess, is there anyone else that wants to speak on behalf of the project here? Anybody wanna speak in opposition to the project here? Yes, sir.
Where do you want them to stand, so they can be heard?
I, I will just ask them to speak up. I think that you'll have to, the mic that is recording is in the center of the room.
Can they just sit down? Yeah.
You want me to move?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yep.
I'm not gonna put a specific time limit, I think that these, these folks have been through this before, and they honor that. I addressed it early on, and I think that we're okay. Nobody's gonna steal everybody's time, so go ahead.
And make sure you state your name first.
Hello, my name's Mick Weiss, I live adjacent to the property that's being requested to be rezoned, and I've lived there for my entire life, but just a quick thing that I wanna bring out is, is, you know, the last time we went through this, you know, Dewey brought up a very valid point at the end of the meeting, you know, has anybody ever attempted to buy this property? It was something that stuck in my head for a long time at that meeting. After that meeting was all said and done, a couple days later, you know, after JD's denial was requested there, or accepted, I should say, you know, I went and talked to JD about buying it, and we talked about, he told me what he paid for it at that time, we talked about prices and variability of the property, and I just always told him, I said, you know, if you ever had the opportunity, that you wanna sell it, you decide, because he hadn't decided, I said, I'd like to have the opportunity to buy it. Well, you know, long story short, I didn't get the opportunity to buy it, never even had the opportunity to bid on it, but, you know, that's hearsay, you know. Mark bought it, and that's fine, I have no problems with that, I went and bought some other property anywhere, but, you know, it was A1 property, and Mark knew that when it was A1 property, you know, he knew what he was buying, he knew it was agricultural ground, and it was supported by the comprehensive plan, and that was the thing that I thought, you know, his investment would be, was to nurture that land. He has had a good tenant running it for years, I can't ever complain of what he's done. I mean, he's done an excellent job. He's nurtured the land, he's conserved the land, and he's, he's hauled a lot of grain off that field. You know, the last couple years, there hasn't been some grain planted on part of it, and that's, I guess maybe Mark feels he doesn't need that income at that time, but that, that's not my business, that's his business. You know, I guess I look at, you know, my son put together an email, I know you guys all saw it, and, and, you know, I think there's a lot of good points that we tried to put on there, you know, I'm trying to represent all the neighbors, you know, we went around, informed the petition. A lot of people just came to you and wanted to sign that petition, and we didn't force anybody, we didn't have a gun, say you had to force it or, or sign it or anything, you know, it's just, they came to us and they vented on their opposition, they vented on their sincerity to where they live, and et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, the bottom line is, is that we're talking about agricultural land, that's been agricultural land for, I know, at least sixty-five years, 'cause I've lived there sixty-five years. You know, I don't think anybody in this room would ever, including Mark or anybody here, would ever imagine that C-33 would be a corridor to so much traffic. I remember what was the gravel road, you know, and, and the traffic, and the truck traffic, not only in the harvest season, but twenty-four days, or twenty-four hours seven days a week, you know, you're supporting the ethanol plant, or the soybean plant, or the train station, or Menards Distribution Center over there, it's tremendous traffic. I mean, when you pull out of your driveway, you look three ways, 'cause two times you might not see the cars coming for the third time, so I mean, it's, it's a very valid point. You know, we, we look at the opposition, that accidents can happen, and they did happen, they happened right out in front of my house, and I was surprised that the person that hit the vehicle wasn't killed at that time, because it was a disastrous thing, and it was just, there was so much traffic. It's, it's a big point, you know, what's C-33 gonna be like in, in five years, or ten years, or three years, or two years down the road? You know, Mark's talking about eight to eleven houses, you know, all of a sudden, we got thirty-three to thirty-eight more cars coming out of the driveway every day, you know, and, and that's kind of a, that's a pretty dangerous situation. You know, we look at the plan of saving our soil, we look at toxicity within our sale, or in our soil, you know, we look at, you know, the septic system that we put in, we look at the runoff that occurs. One of the biggest things that came about that really drew an attention to me, you know, two years ago, we had a dra, a bad fire right in that neighborhood right across my house, you know, Tim Spratt and I were the first ones there, and first thing we were worried about is people that were in that shop that could have been perished in that shop. The fire department, you can't commend them enough for the job that Plainfield Waverly did in that fire department to protect the environment and the outline areas, you know, everybody was worried about the wind, because the wind had blown days before, we were very fortunate that day, we were very fortunate the fire stayed within that confines of the building, but there was many times that that water tub, that they got the water from the St. Mary's Church ran pretty low to being dry, and everybody was very concerned, if that woods was gonna catch on fire, which way it would go. You know, Bruce Gippel brought up a very good point, you know, he's got a superb conservation program going down those trees and with CRP ground. What happens in the middle of the night, we get a bunch of houses out there, I mean, it can happen anytime. I'm not pointing any fingers at anybody, but it can happen that somebody's got a fire pit out there, and they go to bed, and a spark throughout the night gets to something that went on fire, and all of a sudden, we've got a whole neighborhood on fire. Our fire department's outstanding, but, you know, they can only do so much. It, it's a concern, it's a big concern to us, you know. You know, you, you look at property tax, you know, when going through the neighborhood the other day, you know, I was invited into two people's houses there that live in the sky view addition to, to the front, and they just are recent people that have moved into that due to situations and circumstances, because the first thing they pointed out to me was, is look out my back window here to the north, look at the scenic view that I have, look at what I've asked for, and look what I've bought here. They purchased that. There's homes in there that are elite in that front district, they're thirty-year-old homes, and the people that have them maintain them very well, and they're very appealing. And they look out their back window, and all of a sudden, it could be destroyed, it's kinda devastating to them. You know, they... You know, they sit there and say, well, we pay very good and our taxes are delivered.
You're going to have to start wrapping it up, because you've got a lot of other people here, unless you're speaking on behalf of everybody.
I think I'm speaking on behalf of all, I really am. And I will, I'll wrap it up real soon.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your time. You know, and I guess I'm just saying, you know, the tax basis will be good and it might be good in the future and it might not ever happen, you just don't know that. I mean, you maintain the roads, you're going to have to maintain maybe that road like you do Shelby and Shiloh, look at the toss and just to that. You've got a comprehensive plan. I think Dewey, you might have been part of that, writing that plan years ago, I don't know, you've been here for quite some time and you've done an excellent job. But the comprehensive plan is to protect agriculture, A1 agriculture, and I think that's the intention of what we need to do. Does it produce good crops? Yeah, it does, and it has. I thank you for your time, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Kathy Folkerts from Dakota Avenue, I live out there, know most of you, and I thank you for your time. You did get the petition and Mick told you that there was a lot of neighbors who literally came to us and wanted to sign that petition, so we appreciate their support. I won't go over all the things that was in the petition, I'm sure you read them. The one thing I will mention is the carbon pipelines. I'm very, very opposed to them. I appreciate Cory's efforts and all of yours in fighting that issue. It's, I went to the hearing a couple of weeks ago, it's 3,700 feet from our driveway, north is where the line is supposed to go. So I appreciate your efforts on that. You know, Breamer County is unique with a mixture of ag and urban. I think that's what makes us unique, that's what makes it nice to live in Breamer County, because you do have that. The comp plan makes it very clear that they want to preserve the ag ground and not have willy-nilly leapfrog development all over the county. They want controlled, sensible growth, I get that. We've been through this a couple of times, this has been identified as an area that should be preserved for crops. There are multiple lots for sale in the county, I want to make that point clear. Arrowhead has at least 10 lots in the country. I understand there's some lots over by 218, I haven't checked all that out. There's lots across from Waverly Utilities that haven't been selling. I understand the houses behind Miller Hardware aren't selling. There's lots in the old Urban School and Cary School, sat there, designed for housing around the schools, there's supposed to be housing. So we have lots of available places for people to build, including in the country. So in 2021, I asked Ken Cameyer why he was denying the subdivision the last time. And his answer was because I follow the comprehensive plan. And that was the right answer. We don't have any ill will towards the hall box and what they're trying to do, this is, you know, I understand it. But it's just the wrong project and the wrong place at the wrong time. We simply don't need the housing and there's no, there's no urgent need for it. We do feel that this field, which has been productive for, like Mick said, many, many years, should be preserved. That's the purpose of our comp plan. That's why we have a comprehensive plan. And it seems like, and I'm hearing that you're not always following the comprehensive plan, I don't know why, you're not always following the planning and zoning recommendations and I don't know why. You have such a good commission between your administrator, the staff, the planning and zoning commissioners, all good people who do their research and make their decisions based on facts and the comp plan. Like Ken Cameyer said, I follow the comprehensive plan, that's why we have it. That's why the Breamer County citizens elected you to do, is to follow the comprehensive plan. So I don't know what's changed, personal opinions don't matter, politics don't matter, this is all kind of designed to be a guide for you and the citizens of Breamer County are expecting you to do that, to follow that plan. Revenue, I did have Aaron and Shelley run revenue with three different scenarios, so I know what the revenue is for the county. At the low end, $12,000 a year, at the high end, 16. It may cost you more than you'll get out of it in revenue. And I understand revenue is a big issue. A lot of the decisions in Des Moines have affected counties and cities and I get that, I really do. But that can change, leadership is going to change and those decisions might change. C-33 is a mess and I heard that everywhere I went.
Is a what?
A mess with traffic. I heard that every single place I went, everyone brought it up. I don't want any more traffic, we have way too much traffic now, I've seen too many people go through those stop signs, it's became, it's really starting to get dangerous. Farm equipment is getting bigger and bigger all the time, semis are rolling through there all the time. I've warned my grandchildren about the corner of Dakota and C-33. It's, it's dangerous. I heard that Farmers Wind is putting in, they did a traffic study and they're putting in a gas station in Breamer, a credit card gas station like they have in Plainfield, because they did a traffic study. So is Breamer County going to be saddled with doing something to change that road? That's a pretty big expense and it could happen. Runoff is a big issue. Sprats gave me these, there's three of them here for you, just to see if you'd like. We brought up our yard in the last one and that was, I can get you pictures of that too, but Tim and Christine wanted us to give you those. You know, do we need to put more septic tanks? Our water is bad in Iowa, we've heard that, it was front page news on the Waverly paper last night about water issues in Iowa. It is an issue and the runoff is an issue. Our wells are pretty shallow out there, some of us may be forced to dig deeper wells because of this. So for all those reasons and probably more, this rezoning should be denied.
Kathy, I have a question. We typically don't ask, do you have a date for this photo? I don't see a date anywhere.
Christine and Tim?
I, it was a, I don't, I don't have a date.
No, within the last couple of years, we had some wetter years that it rained more than the last couple of years, a bit extraordinary and dry.
So the last couple of years?
Yes, I would say so. And that is not our house, that is between our house and our neighbor's house that is south of this parcel.
We have some runoff issues that was taken in September of 2018 and I will get you those, so you can have them in your file. That is extremely an issue for us too. So, thank you for your time.
You bet. Anyone else?
I understand. Excuse me, I'm going to stand, because I don't get up off of these rolling chairs very well. Mr. Chairman, you're the only one that I see that is still here.
Mike, why don't you introduce yourself?
Michael Aubrey, 1278 180th Street. I made a lengthy presentation to you at the last one, I'm not going to repeat that. I agree with everything that's been said here. I have a couple of things that I have recently come about, one being in 2020, I drilled a new well and recently I have seen the ground sinking around the stand pipe. I have contacted Chauver Well and they had great concern. And he said, I remember drilling yours and we go through a lot of fractured shale or limestone before we get to the harder shale. And he says, I'm concerned that you're starting, if we don't do something about this, you're going to start to have well water that is not drinkable. So he suggested they're going to come and evaluate the situation and he says, we'll definitely put bentonite around that to try to seal that up again. And he's suggesting that we wait till spring and then fill that with some good fill dirt and grass it over to solve that problem. Those reports can be found right over here, their Chauver report puts, their reports are filed at the state and with the local, Breamer County, building and zoning. If you want to see that report, I was just over and checked on it before I came in here. Beyond that, I've always been an environmentalist, I still am. I really believe we need to protect our environment very seriously. That's why I ceded my acreage to a pollinator CRP. We need to start protecting our favored and those animals and livelihood in our environment that protects us and lets us be a producing commodity, produce commodities. The last thing that I want to say is that, that fractured limestone is very dangerous in this area and you don't have to go out too far beyond that. As far as it comes in terms of development and housing, I'm a strong believer that housing should be limited to an already incorporated entity such as Waverly, Plainfield, Sumner, or the like. So I, I feel quite strongly about all of these issues and I hope you'll take those into very good consideration when you make your decision on this.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else?
I, uh, I got, Tim Spratt, I live right next door to the proposed property. Just, I just want to do general stuff like you got the half hour, you're going to be done here. I agree with all my neighbors, I mean, the petition kind of says it to me. Planning and zoning didn't recommend it, the last board, which not all of you are on, didn't recommend it. I know when you ran for office, we had a lengthy conversation in my front yard and it seemed to me like you were not for this type of development. That's what I took it as, maybe I took it wrong. But the summary was, is everybody kind of to this point and said, no, and to Mark's point, not my backyard, exactly. I moved to the country, 18 years ago I bought my chunk, for the fact I did live in town.
Did you build a new house?
I built a new house there, yep. It was a 10-acre property and they divided it up, it's all wooded, no agriculture. And I'm all for the agricultural side of things as well. But it, I talked to Mert when I moved in, Mert was the original, I don't know, hold on, Mert farmed the ground?
35 years.
35 years. And I brought this up at planning and zoning, when I talked to Mert, he wanted to build his retirement home, which is where Chuck lives right now. And at that time, the county and the rules made him plat the properties along C-33. That was apparently their rule at the time, he said he had to plat the front. But he didn't want to do anything else, he would not, did not want to develop it. I tried to buy some land from Mert to expand my property. He wasn't interested in that, he's a farmer, he said this should be ag land. The county made me plat these, so we knew somebody could be right next to us when we bought our property. But I just think it's, we've had all these meetings and the majority of the people in the neighborhood, you know? I got neighbors right now and I talk to my neighbors right now, I talk to almost all of them, I don't get around enough to talk to everyone. But yeah, it is, we don't want them in our backyard, you might say. It's the sinkhole issue which has been brought up and I actually looked it up this morning on a website, it is a marked sinkhole right in the middle of this proposed addition. So what do all the, what type of septic is going to be able to go in there? Where's it going to drain to? We already have the water issues, is that going to, they're going to help it? What direction are they going to go with the water? Are they going to go through my neighborhood, are they going to go through Kathy and Mar's property? That needs to be addressed or figured out way before we approve that we're going to build houses there, we got to figure out what we're going to do with it again. You know, I understand Mark's got a considerable amount of money tied up in this, but that's, really shouldn't be the supervisor's problem either, you know? You should have maybe tried to get something passed before he bought it, or been on that side before he bought it, which I think he was helping JD to try to move that along. But the cost and what he's invested should be a moot point, that he should have bought some land that was either already ready for residential properties or farming, I guess. I'm a strong believer in the comprehensive plan, I harped on that a lot, the first time, the first go-arounds, I might say. I mean, it says right in the front page, preserve the land, in the back it says, no leapfrogging. Well, they let JD kind of do that in the past, but the properties that he did it on were very poor for farming. I used to hunt them, I knew Leonard Hill, I hunted that ground, I knew it was poor ground. They ended up quarrying sand out of it before they made a neighborhood out of it. That made sense, the corner in which Mark lives is extremely sandy as well. It's not very good for crops. This land is different. It's not very far, land changes right in there, considerable amount if you look at the soil reports for the county. So hopefully I summed it up, I'll quit, but.
Thank you. Very, very quickly, I don't want to say that we didn't hold.
Mine's quick.
Go ahead.
My name's Christine Spratt, wife to Tim, live right next door. I guess my comment is mainly to Cory, when he was campaigning, I don't know if you remember us, you spent well over an hour with us.
Tim and I had a pretty lengthy conversation.
I appreciate that. But we both asked you what your, how, what you thought of that and you said, absolutely under no circumstances would I ever change the zoning to that. And you told us that.
I didn't say absolutely never.
You, you told us that, you said, I want to keep ag land and it should stay.
We asked, that we didn't get into this back and forth, I'm going to ask again, I don't want you two to get into back and forth, you'll hear in conversation, so.
My name is Mary Beiney, I have a lot currently in the Mark Hall box, first subdivision that Mark and Wendy started. Our land is very, very close to this possible new subdivision that Mark is wanting, Mark and Wendy are wanting to put in, along with, I think, a relative of his. A lot of things have already been covered, I won't go through them, I'll just mention them. I agree with that land should not be taken out of production, even if Mark decides not to produce anything, that's his choice, but it is good work ground. There is a drainage and runoff problem already, it's a high-traffic area and also there are unsold lots. My issue also, in addition to those, is we have a current subdivision, we have issues in the current subdivision, never resolved, I just wanted to bring it to your attention so you understand the kind of person we're dealing with. One of the things is, when we built our house, a couple of years after, and we've only lived there 10 years, a couple of years after we had, you know, some heavy rain, you know? Our house was covered by water, three sides. There was water completely around our house on three sides. I'm not talking a little bit of water, I'm talking a lot of water. And so we went to the county and said, you know, do we need a bigger culvert? And they says, no, the problem is the road Mark put in. So our problem isn't something we did, it's something that the owner of the subdivision actually created. We will always have that problem. Another issue is, of course, you've probably heard about the pump issue we have, my issue here is not so much the pump, but we have to share the pump on the well, we have to share the electricity from the pump on the well. And Mark just sends us a bill and says, you owe this. And we have asked him so many times, can you just provide us a copy of the electricity so we can see what our third or our fourth, you know, our fourth actually is? No, I'm not going to give you any. Over and over and over. And he said, well, if you're not going to pay it, I'm going to file a small claim against you.
This is getting, no, I don't want to, Mark, I don't want to get into this back and forth. That's something that you should have spoken to an attorney about and gotten settled, it's a legal issue, it has nothing to do with this conversation.
Okay, I realize that.
Please go on to others.
I'm trying to make you aware of it.
Fine, but it's becoming too personal, it's not necessary.
Okay. Also, I had an issue with Mark and Wendy coming to our house on different issues on the subdivision and I did my research and I the subdivision, and I did my research, and I knew what the facts were, and they came to me, and they were telling me facts. I'm like, "Um, I don't think so." I knew that they were not transparent. I knew that they were not telling me the truth because I knew what they were saying was not true.
Again, that's not relevant to this. Your concern about the property is, but not the personality between the two.
Sure. What, okay. One of my biggest concerns is, if you allow eight to 11 more houses go in, the problem I'm going to have with water is just going to be multiplied because I've already got an issue, and that water is going to just come right down to our place and be worse than it is. And I don't want to have other people dealing with the same issues. I mean, it could maybe not even affect just us. It could affect the other property owners around us. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, we've actually had, there's, we've checked out some other lots. My daughter wanted to buy a lot, and we have looked at lots in the area, and there are a lot of lots in the area, you know, that people could actually buy that are already subdivided and set up, ready to go. There's no reason to put more lots into this area. Again, there's the traffic issue, and they are right. The traffic is horrible on that road. When we moved in, it wasn't nearly this bad, but they've done other improvements that has created the issue with the traffic that we have on the road.
That's been stated before, so do you have anything new to add?
I also want to know, what has changed since this all happened with this property before? I mean, what's the difference? I mean, didn't it go to the Supreme Court, and they denied it or knocked it down? I mean, what actually has changed to, you know, have him bring this back again? This property has gone through all these stages. I'm curious. Can you tell me what's changed, why we're dealing with this again?
You have a new property owner, and you have a relatively new board of supervisors. That's part of government processes. Things have changed.
The same issues all.
Those things do happen, yeah.
Right. The same issues all remain, only now we have more of a water problem, a water drainage problem. We have more traffic. So you're saying that, you know, the only thing that's changed is things have got worse, and we have new people?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one last statement?
Please do keep it really short.
One minute. We all here as a group respectively admire people for putting up with this. I mean, you went through this now, going on four times, and there's nobody here, even Mark, you know, he's going through too, just like all of us are. We appreciate your patience. We really do. We hope you'll understand our position. We hope you'll adhere to the comprehensive plan. But again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'll be very brief, please.
I'm Bruce Kipple. I live at 1880 Elk Avenue in freedom of property rights. I own the land east of this property in question, and right close to the boundary line, I have planted five acres of pine trees. They are mature now, and there are six to eight inches of pine needles on the floor. And if a fire gets started in there, it's gone. It'd go up like gasoline. Spark from a burning barrel, or kids playing with matches and candles and whatever. And we planted these pine trees in about 20 acres east of that for wildlife. And if we start building houses right next to this, my wildlife program is gone. And I and my wife and my kids has done this for, oh, we started this probably 45, 50 years ago, and we put a lot of work into it, and we need to protect this land for the wildlife. And we've planted switchgrass and buffer strips and milkweed, and it's beautiful out there. I'd like to go out there and sit on top of the hill and just watch the beauty of this. And if we start building houses right next to it and everything, it's gone. It's gone. And I urge the supervisors to vote against this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. One last call.
It's all yours.
Can I say something?
Yes, please. That is the last call.
I promise. I'll be brief. I'm Emily Bavers. I'm a young person trying to live here in Waverly and make my life here, and I think I, in some ways, represent what we want the future of Waverly to be, is young people coming here and making their homes here. Property rights are very important. I'm a daughter of a farmer. I recognize that. Property rights are driven by human values. They are also limited by human values. Property rights are a very important aspect of the law, so are zoning guidelines. And particularly in an agricultural community like this, I think that we have to think carefully about the Waverly that we want to build for the future. Driving through town and seeing lots of open lots says something to the people driving through town. Buying a home here and having lots of homes for sale and sitting on the market also says something. So the commission can and should make the decision that you think is in the best interest of the future of the town, keeping in mind that the future of the town is my generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing. Second.
Moved by Bob, second by Cory to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. Is there a motion to act on the first reading?
We approve the first reading, ordinance 2507. I'll second.
Moved by Bob, second by Cory to approve 2507 for the first reading. Any discussion? I would like to comment on a couple of things I heard this morning, traffic safety concerns. I checked with the sheriff, and I believe he reported to me that, he hasn't done a written report, he has the information over there, but if I remember him saying right, there were 11 accidents in the last 14 years on a two-mile stretch, including the area in front of the other subdivision, and two of those were car-deer accidents, and two of them were people that hit the bridge. So you've got to probably take those four off. So traffic, I wouldn't certainly ever argue that it's picked up. We see that everywhere. You don't need to drive very far to see additional traffic. But my position, and you guys know this from the last time, is that we hear more than anything else that you've got to do something to keep my property taxes down. So for me, this conversation does bear a lot of my decision-making on the possibility of keeping property taxes down. I see when I travel around this fine state, almost every county is growing in areas that we're arguing about here today. Yesterday, I went to Cedar Rapids. On the way back, took the side road through Independence, and on the east edge of Independence along Old 20, right out in the middle of, and Bruce would probably not appreciate this, right out in the middle of a lot of old prairie grass, switchgrass, it was farm ground, not that many years ago, obviously, but somebody had turned it into preservation grass. There's 10 at least brand-new houses. What makes us different in Bremer County? Why do we want to not allow any rural development to happen in Bremer County? I don't, that part I don't understand. So sorry to do a speech, but that's where I came from the first time.
No, and I appreciate, and I echo that. I too, I checked in with the sheriff, and two, possibly three, of those incidents were like driveway-related in that corridor through there. I compare that to data along other parts of C-33, over south of Tripola, where we have a much less dense population and a higher incident rate per year. So I don't correlate that that particular development in that V-14 to T-77 area has solely contributed to any accident data in there, and sheriff agreed with that statement. So I don't think the traffic is an issue. Couple of things that were mentioned repetitively today with the water issues, and I, Mark, you had went out of your way, that water study you did on the soil study, one of the things that stuck out to me in that is that in their observations, residential development has actually reduced water runoff from agricultural properties. And part of that is the state has what's called SUDAS, State Urban Design Development Standards. And so in a process like this, part of what we would work through if this was to see fruition and see development is adhering to those standards and seeing that retention is put in for drainage that's created off of roofs and hard surfaces. So I think those issues would be alleviated if this was to make it to development. And going through the, there's a lot of research here in the last couple of weeks of information that's provided to us. Probably the most disappointing thing to me was to see that deposition and see, there was history several years ago that I wasn't aware of, that this parcel was, in 2003, I believe was the date, was in the Complan Plan for Future Housing, and then to see how it was taken out, and Doug Bird, in his deposition, was pretty frank about the process of how it was taken out by both P&amp;Z and the board. That was disappointing to me because I look at, to your point, Dewey, that seeing these other counties thrive and grow and broaden that tax base and make the difficult decisions that we make on the daily much easier because they embrace some growth and some smart growth. We've had our hands tied behind our backs for 15 years, and I think that's part of why we as a board want to do, to look at the, opening up the comprehensive land use plan again and taking another look at that and how it fits our needs. This is another great example where I think we've done some long-term damage to the county and to the taxpayers as a whole by the actions that have been taken. And so for that reason, today I'll be a yes vote and approve in this first reading.
Lindsay, I have, I'm going to address it to you. I don't expect, do you notice that developer have any intentions of making the road then, turning it over to the county and it being a county road at some point?
That we are not that far along in the development process, and that'd be a conversation.
That almost always happens.
Yeah.
From your experience now, and I don't know if you guys know Lindsay enough, she is awesome. She is awesome, and she does such a great job for Bremer County. If he has any desire to turn that over to the county, will there not have to be additional drainage issues addressed ahead of time?
Landon, I don't know if he's here yet. Landon would be in that conversation and approval prior to turning that over to the county.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, you know, I kind of, I agree with you guys. My only concern is the entry into it. The line of sight, it just, that concerns me, and I don't know what we can do there if we keep on moving, but it looks a little hokey from my perspective, so.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the first reading ordinance 2507, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We will set the, well, we'll have a motion.
I'll move to set the date, second reading for December 2nd at 9:15 a.m.
The second. Second. Moved by Cory, second by Bob to approve, or to set the date for the second reading on this for December 2nd at 9:15 a.m., so next Tuesday at 9:00. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries. We'll have this conversation again next week. Thank you, everyone. Again, that's, conversations is what makes Bremer County strong. We appreciate you.
Cory, you know what you said to us.
Lindley, I'm sorry I pulled you off, but.
I do bring some gifts for you.
I hope they're under $2.99.
Well, they're free. Do I find, consider it a gift?
Oh, these are for something we can use for other people.
You are marketing.
Okay. So they're not really for us.
No.
Thank you. We'll clarify that before they're the issue.
Free marketing.
Landon, we could have used you a little early today.
Oh, yeah? We understand alcohol. All right. We might ask you to be here next week. Okay.
Yeah, please, Landon, be here.
Have to make sure there's room for him. We got a full house.
Lindley, go ahead.
All right. So every year, we have to submit an opioid fund's public annual report by December 1st to the Iowa Attorney General's Office. So for fiscal year '25 is what I am here on today. We did not have any spending in '25. That all started in FY '26 for the opioid fund. So our abatement account balance at the start of fiscal year '25 was $269,397.56. We received $72,028.63 during fiscal year '25. We accrued interest of $6,747.59, had $90 of expenses. So the abatement fund balance at the end of the reporting year was $348,083.78. So that is all we have to submit to the Iowa Attorney General's Office.
Does the motion need to authorize your signature or mine?
Mine, that's what we've done in the past.
Is there a motion to authorize or to approve the report and authorize Lindley?
I'll move to approve the report, authorize Lindley to sign. Second.
Moved by Cory, second by Bob to approve the opioid report for 2025 and authorize Lindley to sign. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, that motion carries.
Then just remind the public how many you got of these?
Oh, hundreds. We have like 400 large, and then I think we ordered 400 medium. Yesterday, I gave out probably close to 500 to our partner organizations that are also going to distribute them, so use them and hand them out.
So if there's organizations that are thinking, they missed out, they can still contact you, and once again, you can put your opioids in here and.
Any drugs.
Any drugs.
There is a little thing on the back. I'm not sure what, there is certain drugs that you shouldn't put in those, but I think those are probably pretty rare. But those are medium pouches. They hold 45 pills. I don't remember how many patches and creams. So instead of putting things in the trash as they are, dumping it down the drain, put it in that bag, and it'll deactivate it, and then you can put it in the trash.
With some water.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Lindley.
Thank you, Lindley.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Landon, morning. The question is, was, and I'm going to ask you, we can't really have a conversation because it's not on the agenda to do so, but when a developer develops property and they have any intentions of turning the road over to us, do they, should they, or do they need to work with the engineer's office to make certain that the roads and drainage is done ahead of time? Or would they, if, before we would accept it, wouldn't they have to bring it up to our standards?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Landon.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot this morning. Couple of updates. We do have all the plows ready. Look like we might get to use them this weekend already.
No.
Hope not.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Oh, no, you may come and go.
And then I just had a couple of other kind of update-type items. And then I just had a couple of other kind of update type items. We had the senior student in from Jamesville earlier and I expressed to their, I don't remember his title, but the gentleman down there that handles that, that we really enjoyed that and he mentioned they have an intern program there where they send, I think it's typically seniors, but it might be other grade levels to to work with different businesses and stuff in the area and asked if we'd be interested in hosting one this spring if they had an interest. I certainly would. We have had a summer intern on the budget for a couple of years and just haven't hired one, so I'd be interested in moving forward with that. If there's no objection, I'll bring some paperwork and things we got to put together. We'd have to probably put some type of policy together on it. Waverly's got a good one already that they use, so we'd have some good guidance there, so.
So you're thinking about getting intern in the spring and then hire them in the summertime?
Potentially, yep.
Or shadow?
Yeah, yep.
I think that as long as it's meaningful work that an intern is doing, I don't like it when people have interns and then they sit in a corner-
Sit around and that's-
And don't have anything to do.
That's kind of where the-
And then also you'll want to, under the guidelines, the way you're describing it, you're going to want to work with HR to make certain that it's proper to do it that way.
Right. That's kind of where the idea came from, is we had them out to Job Shadow here, what was that, a couple of weeks ago and by the time they come to Job Shadow in the fall, our projects are done and so we're driving around saying, hey, that's a bridge, you know, in case you couldn't tell. And so it'd be, I mentioned it'd be really nice to have them out in the spring when we're ramping up with projects and actually doing work and they can be a little more involved, so.
Excellent.
And then the only other thing I have is there are some change in procedures at the DOT level, it was actually a state law that was passed that we're just running into. On FM-funded projects, we no longer require a board wet signature on the final voucher. And so I'm just curious how we want to handle that going forward. So I can sign the final voucher on your behalf, but I assume you still want some type of update on how the project went. Should I just bring the numbers here for your information? Do you want to take some type of action on it?
We could just accept it as a report essentially.
Yeah.
And shake code allows it through their rules?
Yep.
For you to sign it?
Yep.
And then prior to your signature, I would think you'd want to just drop a report to us.
Give a report to you, okay.
And this is just for completed projects to do the final pay voucher?
Yep, yep. In the past, they required a wet signature from the board before they would process that final payment. They no longer need that, so.
They still do on the front end for executing the contract.
Yep, and typically what we've done is a resolution to allow me to sign that because it goes through that electronic system, but I still bring it to you, so you have to act on that resolution, yep, so.
I hate to do this to you and I should have talked to you in advance. You got two minutes at an hour time. The Tripola County shop, are we any closer to finding places to consolidate with Reedland? I want by the shop over there and it's starting to, going to need some fairly major work. I mean, we owe it to Tripola-
Right.
To keep it looking good. What's the status? That property south of Tripola, have we rechecked back with that?
So we sat down, Andy and Nick and myself, about a week or two ago and did kind of a little mini work session on this and we've got, I'd have to look at my list, I think we identified three or four potential locations, so I just got to reach out to those people. So I'll work on that now, see if there's any interest there and-
That will be our last consolidation.
Yep.
And I think that, you know, certainly the last ones have been very successful.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I would appreciate it if we could move forward with that sooner than-
We certainly can, yeah.
Okay.
I don't have anything else this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Corey, you're working with these folks from Trees Forever?
Yep.
One of you, at least, or all three?
All three of you if you want to join us.
Well, we're all together.
All right, well then, bind by chains, move on up.
Thanks for having us.
So Paul and I have been working together for, oh gosh, we started probably August, late August, early September, putting together a repopulation plan for trees in the front lawn. Paul had put together the, kind of a synopsis of what we walked about in the front yard and where we wanted to, where we felt trees would be rightly placed. Maybe some small adjustments to this, to, Scott just shared with me this morning, Paul, the irrigation plan, so like there's one lateral that's going to make us move a little bit with with one row, but just a process to work together. I think this actually started Brian Bergen, I'll give him credit, he had reached out to either Bob or I think both of us suggesting that start working with Paul on this and make it a co-op project. But with what Paul's put together, I'll let him talk about the tree side of it, looking for is at least a partial financial commitment from us and I think we've got some money parked in Scott's budget last year from budgeting for this, some of this purpose, so I think we can take care of that if we're in agreement. But if you want to just go through the tree plan real quick, just kind of talk about what we're, how we're looking to populate and, I don't know if you guys, Cassandra shared the plan to you in email or not?
Yep.
Okay. So maybe you got a print copy, but Paul, if you want to go ahead and take it from there and-
Yeah, everybody's got it, we've got it extra here. Anybody needs to see it?
I just need to grab it up here, but we have it, so.
All right, well, thanks for having us, Paul, Paul and Dave, and we're from Trees Forever and like Corey had said, we'd walk the lawn and stuff and kind of looked at things and tried to get an idea and I think one of the major components was we don't want to overpopulate, you know, that you wanted the fresh, clean look that you've got now that you've put the time in landscaping in. So here are some ideas, we'll start kind of on the lower right-hand side there, the southeast and that's a bur oak and there's kind of a knob there. These circles are larger just to show that the trees grow, you know, 50, 60, 70 years from now, they're larger trees. But that that particular one, if we don't do anything, I'd like to see that somewhere in the lawn. I've got one that's about three inch diameter, four inch diameter that is actually a sapling from the bur oak that was at City Hall. So that's got a little-
Big Daddy in the parking lot?
Yeah.
That's cool.
It's been saved for a special home and I think this might fit the bill. Then moving over there to the west, we talked about the elms, the Valley Forge is kind of like a disease-resistant American elm, so it can kind of give that, you know, we've got a nice historic-looking courthouse, it kind of gives that look of generations past in years and years to come, you know, and they grow fairly quick, but you know, the other trees that are already out there that are starting to mature aren't going to last forever either. In fact, there's a blue spruce that's kind of halfway underneath that East Valley Forge elm that is starting to show some signs of disease, so I wouldn't expect its life to be-
So we're intentionally kind of crowding it because we anticipate within the next five years it'll be gone, so it's just kind of-
Correct.
Pre-placing its replacement.
And then, I mean, these are just kind of, and they're, you know, they can be adjusted, of course, any which way you'd like, but it gives room for the, you know, from the sidewalk and then also just kind of flanking the Statue of Liberty there just so that has a clear line of sight. Then moving up towards that and that landscape there, those two smaller ones are red buds and we used to have some magnolias up along the courthouse that gave you some nice spring color and there's really not a lot left with that. So the idea there was they could be down below, not block the courthouse, they're not going to grow up, you know, 30, 40 feet, these are 15, 20-foot trees, be more of a shrub-type form, give you a beautiful color in the spring. And there's just kind of a couple of pockets there and it could be mulched or rocked to match the landscape with a river rock stone. We'll move over to, by the parking lot to the east, there's four trees there, that might be where you're talking about, the irrigation line because you'd have rotors-
We talked about probably moving those west just a little bit, I think gets us off that line from the map I was looking at, but we were looking, they're, kind of the initiative on those was to give a little bit of separation from the parking lot, a little bit of like late afternoon shade there on cars as well, but just to kind of take that hardscape of parked vehicles away from the facade.
Mine isn't quite large enough and I'm not seeing where to-
Just these four.
Yeah, I know which ones, but what are we proposing there?
More of a columnar maple, we're looking for something in the orange-red fall color. If you've ever heard of autumn blaze, something similar to that, probably not autumn blaze, but there's matador-
There's a few newer species that are, they only grow about 10, 12 feet wide, 25 feet tall, they're more like a boulevard tree for tight little areas like that, urban settings.
There's a sugar maple we can't talked about, I get a little nervous with that with the parking lot and the amount of snow, salt and the sugars just don't like that parking lot heat and the, and the salt, so. And then it stops kind of there too, we took into account like where you're going to push all the snow, right? So we didn't want to put anything down in that southwest corner of the parking lot just to kind of keep that open. Then you've got the, you've got the memorial tree.
Between the building and the sidewalk there.
Between the building and the sidewalk there and I just placed that in because that had been mentioned to me, that that had already been taken care of and that was the planned location for that. And that would come with a plaque, or you guys are working on a plaque. And then over to the the west, another red or sugar maple. I am aware that these trees here, north of the sidewalk, many of those are coming down too for the addition right out behind us here. But putting some in there for color as well, maybe like a red sunset or something like that, red maple. So green leaves in the summer, beautiful orange or red in the, in the fall there. And they don't quite get as tall as fast as some of the other sugars or the autumn blaze style, so it's a little bit broader of a tree, 35 to 40 foot. So that's kind of the idea, we talked a little bit about further north on this side, back on that parking lot, didn't seem like the work was quite done yet there and some changes might happen, that's an easy fix later.
We're adding a parking space there, a little curb retaining wall, making an area to kind of tuck the dumpster in beside the existing garage there, so the only opportunity back there will be maybe like a small ornamental and we can work with that on phase two of the construction project.
Well, my probably big, second biggest concern with trees, if the oilages come up maintenance, I'm not familiar with Valley Forge elms. I know there are some trees that you're, every five mile an hour wind, you're all picking up little sticks and branches. How, where do they fall in that category? I don't want, no, I don't want Scott's people to have to be out every time we get a, just a gust of wind and have to pick up sticks, because I had a willow tree that that was the case and it was-
Well, they're a lot better than a river birch as far as shedding sticks in your yard, but you know, I think 50 years from now, there could be a little bit of that, but what we've planted quite a few of these along the right ways and in parks and if you prune them, if you keep pruning them up to central leader, you know, 20, 30 foot up until you just can't reach anymore, they do pretty good and I don't see a lot of leaves falling off of them at all.
And the bur oak has acorns?
It will.
Is that problematic for us at all, Scott?
Where we have them, where they have them.
We have the one here.
Red or-
Do we want more acorns or doesn't that?
I don't think it's a big deal.
Not a big deal, okay. Nice plant otherwise, I think that it does a good job of almost highlighting the courthouse. I like it.
And you know, my biggest concern, Paul, is you know, making sure the statue and the flag is all visible, but you believe this will stay visible and-
Yeah, I think there's going to be a couple of years where you're in that transition phase on those elms where they might just be, you know, 10 years from now, they might just be there where you can't quite-
Take the bottom up, yeah.
Take the bottom up, tall enough to give you the sight, but they'll get there.
Okay.
And I think that's the benefit of having something like that, base shaped and more arching.
Those red buds down by the statue kind of give us something early while like the landscape that we just had planted in, the perennials and whatnot and the terraces before that gets into bloom, so it'll give us a little more length of color through the season in the front too, so I think it's a good plan to put together.
Scott, you have any concerns?
Will we look at some of these too? If I can add another thing, you know, these, I'll be honest, I dropped these off of a drone shot that I got and this, I couldn't move the circles real well after I placed them. So every planting plan that I do as well, like these maples along the east side, you've got spray course plus you, what's the width of your mower that you're going to be using? We always take that into account, move the mulching outside of that, so it's an easy maintenance, so you know, think about things like that.
That is important, I appreciate it.
This is an idea, right? Not the exact, we're not going to go flag it today, so.
That's good, I would definitely make sure that you work with Scott and make sure we minimize maintenance as much as possible, so that's awesome.
Really like the idea of that bur oak.
It's need, it needs a home.
Yeah, that'd be neat.
Financially, you know, we represent Trees Forever, we've got monthly meetings, we do some fundraising here and there, we've gotten some donations over the last year to help pay for some projects or help pay for some projects. Traditionally, our projects, we like to find either somebody to match us or commit to some sort of maintenance or planting help or something to that, you know, a little sweat in the game so to say. So I guess, I don't know how that falls or if this is the time to talk about that or not, but thought I'd mention it.
You've got an all-in on what you proposed here, like an all-in not to exceed 4,000?
I think we're somewhere in that neighborhood. I think it could be less than that. If the red buds, we're not going to go to get to ours.
How large are those maples and how, how big is that, that bur oak branch?
The bur oak, it's probably what, 12 to 15 feet.
Okay.
It's not super, super wide yet, but-
Got a good start.
It's got a good start, I'd say it's like-
I'm concerned that they want to get it moved before it gets much larger.
Three inches, I, we wait much longer, that'd be, could be moved with a 60-inch spade and with an oak, if you wait much longer than that, then you're going to get giant, the price goes up and the success rate goes down. So the Valley Forge, what I've found is in a two-inch range and they'll, they'd be, it's kind of like a tree spade that goes on a tractor, it's like 20, I think 24-inch. And so that essentially gets B&amp;B-ish without the bag, brought here in the spade. I, the red buds would just be like seven or 10-gallon containerized trees, we don't want those giant, going right away anyways. And I actually don't have a line on these maples on the east yet exactly where, but somewhere in the two to three inch, if we do B&amp;B or something like that, so they could be $250 to $350 apiece, easy, depending on how big we go. $200 for a container, it's a 15-gallon, 350 if we find something that's in the three to four inch range spaded, or two and a half inch B&amp;B, probably about the same. And then the other maple here too, depending on the funding, that might be something we can source with a tree spade as well, depending on utilities and maybe get something a little beefier.
I think what would be beneficial is if, maybe, maybe this is too much to ask, but if you could come up with a definite cost, then we can have a better idea of how we're going to work to-
Okay.
But it most likely is going to come out of Scott's, I mean-
Right, right. We, most likely already have it, we just have to figure out what, where.
Definitely fair.
So one of the other ideas that came out of our committee is to invite the public who would be interested in learning more about planting trees and more about planting bigger trees and just kind of going over some of the do's and don'ts of what you do when you plant these and how the correct way is to plant them. So it's also going to turn into an educational-
Awesome.
-type of thing for the community. What we're hoping from that is that they will support the Waverly Shell Rock kids, the science club do a tree sale each year and we try to pick out which trees are going to be in that tree sale each year. We work in coordination with those kids that are in that club. And so I just think whatever generations of people that we can show, here's- of people that we can show, here's the right way to do it, here's, here's what we're doing. We're not gonna, we kind of decided we should not invite students to this, this time because of the equipment that might be needed to put this kind of stuff in. That adults, though, would be more appropriate venue to invite to, to come and watch how you do this.
Great idea.
We're always looking for opportunities to show off Trees Forever, to try to get a few more members involved. We have a lot, quite a few members, but we want the involvement like any, like any organization.
Well, since this is at the courthouse, and it's countywide, I hope that we can figure a way to invite adults from all the communities to come over and not just Waverly, because it's not just a Waverly project.
Correct. That is exactly right.
So you're looking like a Saturday?
Could be.
It could be, but, you know, we'll just have to play that part by ear. But just wanted you to know that that's part of our intention as well, is to educate people who are, have that kind of an interest.
Yeah, invite the elected officials and make it public, and yeah, love to, if you need some help.
It's a big deal, yeah. And Ron Lein is a great
He's, he's on our committee.
resource to get out to a lot of people on projects like this.
Yeah.
We work with Ron quite a bit.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
And work with us, because I, like our social media channels throughout the county, like, I mean, that'll help get awareness out there so that we can bring in followers that way to make it a big successful event.
I've got some pictures from the nineties, and then tree spades backed up, replanting a few. So here we are, a few years later.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great start. You have anything else?
Thanks for your time.
I'm excited to get that big oak planted.
Timeline to get, so we can get stuff forwarded for spring, like when do you want to bring something back to us, too, so we can give approval?
Month?
I'd say if we can get something done here by the end of the year, so we can order some stuff in January.
Can you guarantee a price if you order within a month, or, and that's gonna be a variable, maybe?
Well, there's three I, I know that I, I can. And then the two red buds, certainly. It's, sourcing those narrower maples is really just kind of the, we'll find it.
You could probably do two price points on those to give a little bit of cushion if something goes up, or then we could always go down a size there to, I think that, that shading of the parking lot, if we had to go down, it's like to an inch and a half from a two, or two and a half, you know, for cost savings, we could do that.
We can certainly, inch and a half, too, we can get that, you can even get that in a container. So fifteen gallon.
I'm just saying with the tight, how tight the irrigation is right through that corridor, it might be nicer to go smaller on the front end, be a little easier to plant in there, and allow growth space for roads.
All right.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Oh, I can hold on.
It won't be that long, I don't think.
Hey, we're here to review and accept and publish the semi-annual report.
Morning, Board. You have before you the treasurer's semi-annual report for January through June of 2025. It reflects approximately thirty-eight million in revenues, thirty-nine point three million in expenditures, and an ending treasurer's balance of twenty-nine million, three thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. All funds are fully reconciled and ledged through November eighteenth in accordance with Iowa Code, so ledged and recorded as of June thirtieth, but the report was run on the eighteenth of November. Upon your review and acceptance, the report will be published on December second, or the newspaper's next available publication date. I also noticed this report is a little bit further in advance, because we've got our, our initial clear audit report back from the, the independent auditors that support these figures. Sometimes we have minor adjustments that I worked through with Cassandra to make that could change those numbers, and I want an accurate picture that we wouldn't have to run into a republication issue. So, pretty straightforward. So the only thing that might change is the publication date at the bottom, so.
So looking through this, I didn't know about the Federal Economic Development Fund. What's that? Do we?
We, we have a small amount of money that has been sitting in that fund for ever.
Okay.
That's the fund that we were looking at potentially utilizing years ago when we had that conversation countywide, and
Oh, okay.
it didn't go anywhere, it just sat there, so.
So are you aware, do we, what that could be reopened up for? I mean, Cassandra's not here. That'd be a great question for her.
Well, the name describes that.
Right.
Really, as I understand it, anything economic development, it's old dollars that have been in there for quite some time.
Could it be a resource that is available for that new committee with the county comprehensive for developing economic development projects?
I would wanna look at code before I answer that question.
Could be, is the answer.
I, I, I think that it has a lot of flexibility, but I, I don't wanna.
Right, understandable. The only thing that I did do is there's a column on the right-hand side that is typically off by itself for stamp warrants. So if you look at the drainage line, that four, or where is it? Yeah, the four hundred and seventy thousand, one and thirty-four, twenty-two is usually on a line on itself of stamped warrants that are outstanding. I moved that over a line just to narrow the, the report over. They're basically one in the same.
One, one of the things I do remember, we used those economic, and shall you will remember this, too, is we, we, when Sumner was doing their daycare center at the school, they asked for five thousand dollars, and we gave five thousand dollars from, I'm quite sure it was that fund.
Yeah.
So.
As long as it's public good.
Right.
Definitely. Okay. Well, unless you see anything, Larry, and I will get this off to the newspaper after your acceptance to get it published.
I'm going to accept and recommend for publishing the treasurer's semi-annual report.
Second, move by Cory to accept, and second by Bob to accept and authorize the treasurer to publish the semi-annual report. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Chair, what's aye? Most careers nails.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Barb, Nick. Nick's been with us in his current capacity for what, two months, and already causing us, way to go, Nick.
Just asked a question.
It was a valid question.
It was a valid, yeah, yeah. So, and it, wise that we had addressed it, so.
To start this off, I'm just gonna hand you around a copy of our current handbook policy for expenses. Did you get that?
Yeah, the three-three.
Good. Would you also get?
Highway Department supplemental?
Highway?
Yep.
We got it.
Both.
And conservation?
I gotta get conservation.
So that's just third, third page. Third page, that's just.
Is it three copies?
Yeah, I got, I got copies here.
What's your recommendation, HR? What, what's your thoughts on making this fair and appropriate across county?
Since it's something that is a necessity of the job, it's kind of a personal item. I think you're mostly, between Nick and Tim are concerned with boots. And that's kind of a personal PPE footwear thing that you just don't really keep in stock. I kind of like how the secondary roads, pretty simple when it comes to safety equipment. I kind of like how that is written up. If that's something that Nick and Tim could work with in their department.
So are we, and please, Nick and Tim, don't take this wrong, only asking, are we looking at it as a benefit? Is, the reason I ask that is the code is very explicit relative to law enforcement, which would include some of the conservation, possibly, that certain uniform items are provided. And I don't know of any code that says we need to provide gear for other departments. But I, I'm certainly not opposed to it. I, I just wanna make certain that we, if we're gonna do it, it's in as a benefit to the employee. They recognize that, if that's what it is.
And I'm not so sure if there's a policy that states that, but what I'm, I'm basing my concerns with is Scott from IM.
IMWCA.
IMWCA highly recommending that, that our footwear be, be paid for by the county because of the infection and stepping on nails, and the garbage that we have to deal with, and those shoes should never be taken home.
So he's approaching it from a liability perspective?
Yes.
Contaminate, contamination.
And probably still nothing to do with code. I don't think insurance gets into code enforcement, so.
But it was, was his recommendation with the contamination, with the puncture, puncture issue, toe issue, crush issue?
The bacteria you're carrying home, walking across your carpet, you're putting it in your vehicle, you're
They, they just have footwear that specializes for just work. I don't think you're asking for really anything right now besides footwear. That's your biggest concern and the deal.
So, yeah, I mean, we can budget for the other PPE, the safety vests and that stuff. That's not a big deal. But like pesticides for me, too, that's, you know, spraying whatever. Most of it's done from the vehicle, but you are out once in a while in the ditch, walking, try to avoid walking through it, but it happens.
Right.
So even with over boots, it's still.
When we do chemicals, we have boot covers.
Right.
They're very, very, very thin, and you can still get through and pour it in your
I'm certain that we, I'm, I'm thinking that we probably could have a policy requiring the wearing of such gear without providing it, correct? It could be part of the job requirements that they have to have certain gear, and then not, not pay for it also, because it's not code, right? You see where I'm getting to?
It's a discretion.
So it's a benefit. And I, and I, but I, I think that it's a good benefit. I think that we should do it and be fair to all the agencies that require it.
I think we had talked about this a number of months back, and I think we brought in some OSHA recommendations, and, and I should have brought that in today, and I didn't, with the required PPE.
You guys have thoughts? What do you, what do you want?
And of course, I mean, it would be, that's a discretion of the department head. I mean, you aren't gonna, however you wanna limit this. Now, Nick had, had worked at secondary roads, a hundred dollars per year, you can actually carry over up to two hundred dollars. Has that been a workable policy out there for secondary roads?
Out, out there, yeah, that seemed to work. You know, most guys would, they either get their boots or they carry it over, and then it got expanded to where you could use it for high-vis stuff, too, and get your own shirts that you could have, whatever. And then, so, yeah, that, that worked good out there, just fine. Most guys would carry it over and spend most of it on their boots, and if they had any extra, they'd get maybe a high-vis shirt or something if they had leftover money, but.
How, how, how long does a pair of boots last out there, Nick? I, probably depends on your job.
It does. I mean, most of the guys get, if you're lucky, two years out over a pair, if you're lucky.
Because I'm thinking a hundred dollars probably doesn't buy
Not really.
That was my next question was.
Hundred and fifty, hundred and eighty dollars for a pair of boots, decent pair of boots.
That was my next question, was when was this last index? Because I go.
It was a union thing, and that
Yeah, that's what that was.
You know, we don't wanna, we're not asking, that's not part of this conversation.
So that, I mean, as an example, that worked well out there. Yeah, that was, the union, that was kind of separate. And then switching over, I should have got boots before. I love thinking about it now, but didn't. And then like, oh, hey, wait, oh, I probably can't use that money anymore, whatever, it's fine. But now it's like, okay, now what do we do? So, yeah, kind of up in the area.
You know, and as you said, a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars for decent pair of boots. And I don't know if we can even make them last a year. Right now, I go through shoes every six months, so five, six months.
Again, Tim, we probably, we probably want to address that as a separate item, because that's a, we've negotiated that even still, because they still have a union out there, and then I'm sure that that's still part of that contract agreement with them. So, you know, at contract time, we could address it with them, really doesn't have anything to do with you two guys, because you're not part of that contract.
No.
Is there anybody else in the county besides conservation and these two positions that it addresses? And then what do we do with the, Nick has a part-time summer help, what do we do with Tim's? You know, it's not just two people here we're talking about. It's probably five or six total.
So conservation, like, do they just turn in their receipts and they're compensated? Or the way is it jackets, boots, embroidered hats, winter clothing be provided with the approval?
Is that how that is processed? Shall we?
If they're reimbursed, yes, through the events themselves, and they're reimbursed.
That policy was probably established, though, by the Conservation Commission, not us. Pretty sure it was.
You mean first, the county buying, buying it for them? Is that what you're saying? I don't know the time, any time that the county has purchased, except for maybe the sheriff's office, everybody pays their own, and they get paid for secondary roads. You just bother yourself and they got the reimbursement.
Yeah, yeah, we turn the receipt in, and then they would get a check the next day or two days, whatever, get processed. This is how that works out there with the contract.
Good night. I think that's the way that I would probably do it here. Have a purchase and then pay reimbursement.
Up to a certain amount.
Yeah.
And you can talk specifically for footwear, required footwear. You know, you could be specific right now, it's the footwear that you have the concern about, not the high-vis or anything else.
No, that's not, no, that's an easy, that's an easy budget item there, but that, I mean, it's, the boots are a little different, but.
Yeah, to me, it's like, you know, you're not gonna pass boots on to the next person. High-vis stuff, you're gonna, you can pass, you know, some of that stuff off, but, but I, I just think we should be a little bit more consistent, especially all employees out, out there, but now Tim's coming, so. And then what about courthouse maintenance? How does staff there, are they wearing safety toe? I can see some instances where they could possibly be in a situation where the safety toe should be required.
I, I am not sure what Scots people are. I did, we had part of a tree come down over at Drexler this past spring, and I know Tom and Grant were out cutting it up, and, and Tom was in full gear with the chaps, chainsaw, chaps, hat.
That's required.
Everything, as required. He was fully geared.
I'm sure that was probably his own stuff.
What he had on his feet, I'm not sure whether he had, you know, safety toes or covers, boot covers or what.
Well, my recommendation is, is that we have Barb work with the, these two department heads and check with Scott, and then come bring a proposed policy to us.
Yep. If you can collectively get a consensus, bring back to us.
And put an amount in there, and, and, you know, that, that would probably force an adjustment at some point at, with the unionized hotels also.
Okay. I just kind of liked how, how the union was written up, the plain and simple.
Yeah, after, I agree.
Yeah, I probably can drop down.
It what?
I thought the union was only wages now, but there's nothing outside of wages.
I thought there were still a couple of little things in there that were, we agreed upon anyway.
It's optional, but yeah, you don't have to worry.
I can check with Landon on that, too.
Pretty short.
And the auditor is correct. It has totally been taken out of. So the conversation needs to be extended to all of them. Problem solved. Thank you, Shelley.
Yeah, thank you for checking on that. That makes it easier to be uniform.
It does.
Then just put it in, in our all-employee handbook. I will speak with those department heads and we'll come up with something, recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Well, it's something that's been mulled around for a while. This isn't making, we came up with last week, so. Trying to figure it out.
Yeah, trying to figure it out.
My only question is, is do we have to, you know, put a stamp on the toe or something? So we know that they're not wearing them on, when they're out on their personal jobs? Like when Tim's out mowing his lawn, he's not mowing, but we.
Yep.
Put air tags on.
Yeah.
Put air tags and keep track of it.
Well, it, it, you know, it's a, it's a valid.
Right.
That's right.
Concern. I mean, you can't be wearing out Breamer County equipment on personal time. So that probably should be incorporated into the policy.
How do the roads people do it today?
That it's limited to county work.
I mean, typically, I mean, they put them on their feet at home, wear them to work and go home and.
Switch them off.
Switch them out or, yeah, that's, I mean, I don't, after 3:30, I don't know what they do with them. But that's kind of how it's always been, is they just, it got reimbursed and then their boot, but.
Yeah, yeah, and in, in our instance, who would be different, took them off at work.
Right.
Cause yeah, if you have a sanitary issue, yeah, that'd be your rule policy out there. I didn't think it was necessary that, that, that Nick would have to take them off at work.
No, I, I agree with that. But I think that the policy should include short sentence that.
A short sentence.
Attended for work and not be worn for private, personal use.
Absolutely.
And then.
That's fair.
Sheriff Staffordies are a little bit limited there. They don't want to put their uniform on.
And take their boots off.
Go to the dance.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else?
Are you have employee recognition? But these guys, if you guys want to leave, you can. But thank you very much for coming, thanks for bringing it up.
Yep.
We have eighteen people this year that we'd like to, to recognize for years of service, ranging from five years to 25 years this year.
And we usually do a little morning recognition, or we have, we've just been doing it in here?
We've just been doing it in here before the meeting. We kind of gave up kind of the actual reception type of thing back when COVID hit. So last year it was set on December 10th at 8:30. I think that was just prior to a regular board meeting.
Two years ago, we did it upstairs conference room. Last year there was conflicts, we did it down here. There was something going on in the conference room, I don't remember where it was.
So planning zoning was probably up there.
Yes, yes, that's what it was. They were operating out of there.
Okay. So we can still have it, so I just need to know a date and time. And I guess we can have it in the meeting room.
Work with Cassandra either the ninth or the 16th? Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
So you're thinking treats up there and then, but down here recognized?
Pardon?
We don't do the treats.
We don't do the treats anymore.
I asked you, we had cookies or something?
I think somebody brought something in, but that was not anything that was pre-planned.
Wasn't official, but.
Okay. That's tricky, Bob, because you got to make it open to the public then, if you're going to provide treats and such, and it's just.
I think somebody brought that on their own.
Probably brought it in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Somebody might have even made coffee.
Do you want to commit Chris to bringing in a couple of brown, brown plate, some brownies or something?
We'll make sure that happens. All right.
I mean, if you're going to commit to it, I can commit to it.
Yes.
Helping me out with that.
Yes, yes, that'll help out.
Okay. I'll do something on that.
Okay, I'm going to flip back to do my intercog report. We had.
Oh, I have one more thing, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
When we're at, when I was at VA, we were doing the employee evaluation. The three commissioners asked, you know, the, the shell that you have for, could it be a fillable PDF? They, they have a hard time writing.
Okay.
So just, that was a comment.
Okay, yeah, I don't have the software for that. I would have to get the software or run it through somebody else to get it into.
So someone should have a.
Talk to Lindley down there.
Okay.
They just need to have a fillable PDF.
She's really good about that. And if she's got a little extra time, if not her, then Nate and Brent.
Yeah.
Right, right. I just don't have the software to do that. And, and for as little, I mean, it would come in handy, but if we can share it and have somebody help me with it.
Yeah.
I'll just say it that way.
Emergency management would like some kind of, some, some lead on a form to, like, for a process. They're going to discuss emergency management.
Okay.
Approve the handbook policy. Next meeting, they're going to create a process. They would like to see some templates for their.
You could also do a lot of those in Word documents. Just do fillable documents in Word. Doesn't necessarily have to be a PDF.
Yeah, and, and write, yeah. I probably just hand it out a PDF. I do have it in Word.
Yeah. Yeah, and that might work too.
And that may, might be just, just as well.
And then, yeah, they can take out a question, so that's.
If they want to modify, do any modification with words.
Yeah, they had one, one issue, you know, did, did Dan, his hours? Well, they're not watching his hours per se, you know, so that was just, I told him, go ahead and put an A on that one. But, okay.
Yeah, and I had reached out to other counties regarding what they're using for forms. And it's very similar to what we already have made up, so.
They have to watch the outcome, but yeah, they can't watch whether it comes in an index. But yeah, okay.
That'd be great if you can get back to them on that. And they should be dropping their stuff off to you.
Okay, so everything is done with him then?
It should be very close.
Okay. Let me do that.
Anything else, Barb?
I brought copies of this compensation analysis. Were you going to have any discussion on this today or?
We, we, we discussed it very briefly earlier. We're all going to print it off, have our own copies if we haven't done so. And we're going to digest it for a week and put it on for a line item discussion next week. So everybody, anybody that wants to come could come and.
Has it been shared with all, just with us?
It has not.
I wonder if you should put it out there for everybody to digest? Have a chance to look at it.
Okay, okay.
Put, put that there, okay?
Yep.
Because I did, printed a report before I came over of actual employee wages, individual wages. And then I saw that you had a roomful in here, so I just sat outside and kind of read through. So there is a lot that I would like to add to this report because they kind of average everything by department. But you look at like maybe.
If that's the case, I wonder if, you know, not that they can't come anyway, but I wonder if we should have a conversation with you first before we have, before we present it to everybody else.
I am thinking so because taking a look at the auditor's office, the average, average salary looks way low. I think that's because of Shelley's election, part-time election, that are actually on a lower hourly wage, which skewed down all the rest of the department. But something in the report is they said, well, other auditor's office between 40 and 45,000, you know, is the median here. To where all of your other employees either fall in or above that. It's just that those part-time employees are skewing it down to where it appears it's only like a $25,000 average for the auditor's office.
So maybe you should take a look at that. Maybe we do a, a review of the data to quantify it before we have the big group discussion.
And then send it out after next week.
And so that's what I've been going through with the different departments.
Okay. Let's have you continue to do that.
Yes.
Work with Cassandra on what time we'll have that conversation. And if they, if other department heads and elected officials want to come and listen, but we won't ask for their input yet then, we'll ask for that after.
So we'll, we'll keep it, the data in here for now? Or do you want me to share it?
I think.
Just in case there's any anomalies, I think maybe we ought to clean it up if there's something there that.
Just like you pointed out there with Shelley's office.
Right.
Maybe if there's something else with another one.
There are, there are some others that I'm finding some inconsistencies.
And then as soon as you have that information, if you could send it to us, so we have it in advance, that'd be great too.
Okay. Some of those departments that work with part-time and occasional, like conservation. And that with some other part-time landfill, really brings the number down for the average.
Well, you know, we, we live in a very public environment and at this point it's public because we've been. So if anyone asks for it, give it to them.
Okay.
But let's not intentionally send it out to everybody until we get a chance to address those thoughts and concerns. Discuss it here next week, then we'll send it out to everybody.
Cause when you start looking individually, you're seeing some inconsistencies with the report.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to start the budget process without having valid data. So if there's something that looks like an anomaly, let's fix it.
But they did put some nice numbers of this is what an average like auditor between 40 and 45,000. Kind of see where we hit with that, higher, low, where we are with that, so.
It was definitely a detailed report. I, I was pleased with the amount of that, I don't.
This was the first report that they had done as a committee.
I was a little busy with a P and Z project. I didn't, I just did a quick skim on it, so.
Yeah, I haven't read the whole thing either, but I've looked through it and I, I was pleased with.
Yeah, and that show we're doing pretty good. There's some areas where we need to do some improvement, but.
Yeah, overall, I thought.
Little, some on the high, some on the low, but the majority are, are within range, within a bracket range on here. So I'd like to look individually to see why, why some are high, some are low, to see if that can be explained.
Because you know what's going to happen? When we adjust that, there's going to be just as much anxiety as there is every year. Because if the high aren't getting the same amount of raise as the low, to fix it, you're going to get.
Well, that was the whole question I had when I read the introduction. So did we use fiscal '26 data like from July 1st for the report? Because like the county comparisons they used were fiscal '25, if I read that correctly. So are we using two different years of data there for comparison?
I am thinking I sent in the figures in August, that would have been fiscal year '26.
Okay. So we might, the comparison data might be a whole fiscal year behind, so that's.
Yeah, I hope not. Cause then if that's the case, she'll have to go through and adjust all of that also.
Right. So that's just something to look at. I kind of brushed on that and it looked like it might be off, but you check on that one.
All right, anything else, Barb, are we clear on that?
No, that is, that is all.
Good, thank you. Come back to my boards and committees. I had intercog exec. I don't know if you know Haley down there or not. She's the administrative person. Her job description has been changed. She's now has some responsibilities in the traffic division for scheduling transit and such. So we had Brian rewrite her, her job description and subsequently changed her salary. And she, of all the employees down there, was actually pretty not compensated probably where she should have been relative to everybody else anyway. So it was a great time to make that fix. We did approve a new website update. I think that you'll all be really happy with their, the new website. When it gets done, it sure looks like it'll be more functional and usable. If you haven't done the intercog website, I strongly recommend that you do because there's just, just gobs and gobs of data, you know, relative to roads and streams and, you know, funding grant projects and such. So strongly encourage that. Employee health and dental insurance were updated and there was a big increase in the employee health, just like it's been everywhere else. But we did a little change in their health, what we, what's provided. And it kind of minimized the, I don't want to throw those numbers out, I don't have it in front of me.
Six or eight percent increase?
It was proposed to be like a 19% increase and largely because of use. And the employees sat down ahead of time and had already kind of agreed to change the plan to allow for it to only be a four, five percent increase. Maybe six, I don't, I don't remember, I don't have it in front of me. So all in all, it wasn't as bad from a full economic impact is what it could have been. Then I had the transportation meeting, and that's the one with the engineers. And mostly was discussion on upcoming projects and bid plans. You know, they have that annual, I think it's held in March, where really it's all the engineers sit down in a room and quarrel about who gets the amount of, because there's not enough federal dollars. So they're, they're real good about it. Last year, I remember specifically John from Butler County kind of yielded, because the year before he had gotten a bigger amount of money, so he yielded. And we benefited from that, so, and that's the way we should be working together, so. Sumner's REIT grant award was awarded for $75,000 for update to their bike hiking, walking trail, which is a nice little help for them. Sadly, their water looping project was denied. That was a $347,000 grant request. And I guess according to Brian, they're very hard to get approved. Small amount of money and looping projects, the federal government tends to look at them as maintenance rather than something new. So they get rejected more often than not, so. That was it. Anything else for this morning?
Just a scheduling thing. I think we'll be obligated to have a meeting on the 2nd of January, won't we, Shelley?
Yep, on Friday.
Organization meetings. Just wanted to get that so we can get it in our schedule going out, but.
Well, let's put, let's put that on the agenda. Would you put, for, for next week, have Cassandra put on their holiday schedule? And we'll iron out. I don't think there should be any changes for Christmas, but if somebody wants to change something.
We'll meet the 24th.
If you're traveling.
23rd.
23rd, we'd meet.
23rd or 30th, but we have to do like appoint boards and commissions on the 2nd. We can't wait till the following Tuesday.
Well, you have to do your organizational.
Meeting.
Get up and running for the year meeting on January 2nd.
Well, we could come on it, you know, first.
You could. I will probably not be here the 2nd, but I will call in.
I think it's declared as a holiday tweet officially.
If it's not, so.
Always something that gets in the way of something else, isn't there? Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.